Here we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Breyer? Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move counsel person that Breyer be excused.
Second.
The move by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that counsel excuse council member Breyer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. First item on the agenda is a proclamation.
Proclamation. Whereas the city of Renton recognizes adequate nutrition as a basic goal for each citizen, and whereas no child should go to school hungry, no baby should be without feedings needed for mental and physical growth, no elderly person's health should be jeopardized by lack of appropriate foods, and whereas food bank, emergency, and hot meal programs working with the city of Renton, local faith communities, social service agencies, and hundreds of volunteers strive day in and day out to stem the rising tide of hunger, but still more need, uh, excuse me, but still need more help, and whereas when winter approaches and low income families must stretch their dollars to cover increasing fuel, electricity, and rental costs, leaving even less money for monthly food purchase, an outpouring of community assistance is needed, and whereas the emergency feeding program coordinates an annual food drive which will be held at grocery stores throughout King County on Saturday, September 27, 2014, to help support the efforts of their program and the area's food banks in fighting hunger, and whereas the city of Renton has been a steadfast supporter of the vital project and has strived to eradicate hunger in the community, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim September 27, 2014, to be Mayor's Day of Concern for the Hungry in the city of Renton, and strongly urge all citizens to join the emergency feeding program and the Salvation Army Renton Rotary Food Bank in their efforts to nourish those who are hungry, and witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 22nd day of September, 2014, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that this proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
The move by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Prince and Ms. Palmer, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And it's my pleasure to present this to Glenn Turner, Executive Director of the Emergency Feeding Program of King County, and also, I believe, Major Chris Potter is here from the Salvation Army.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to extend my thanks to the city council. The emergency feeding program is riding into its 30th year of existence. It's one of the most, I think it's the best-kept secret in King County. We primarily provide food to distribution partners, such as DSHS offices, boys' and girls' clubs, um, the list goes on, and we're up to 206 distribution partners. Last year, at the same time, we were at about 140. So, that's just an indication of the need and how it's growing. It's getting beyond our capacity, but we come in every day to try to fight the battle, and we keep gaining ground, but the more ground you gain, the more you lose. So, we are taking every effort to make sure that no one in this county goes hungry. My intention here today is to make sure that everyone recognizes that the Mayor's Day of Concern has been going on for 22-plus years. This has been a vital source of food for recipients from our program. We take anywhere from 20 to 35 tons of food in one day. We partner with the city of Federway, city of Des Moines, and various other smaller organizations, as well as Hope Link, to make sure that we reach everyone in the county that we possibly can. And all told, last year, I think we brought in about 52 tons of food between all the organizations. That's enough food to last us for about six months, as long as we get the right food, and we target the foods that we need specifically to distribute to the different organizations that we're partnered with. I've been the executive director, I started off as the interim in March of 2013, they made me the interim director. In March of 2014, they made me the permanent director of the emergency feeding program. It does not come without challenge. I think fighting hunger is one of the biggest challenges that we face in not just the King County, but nationwide, and it's one of those secrets that needs to be exposed at this point. We are challenged every day to make sure that we can feed not one, not two, but the entire county, and that's been our focus. We are here today also to ask for volunteers. As he spoke earlier, Mr. Sev, the Mayor's Day of Concern comes this Saturday on the 27th. We have about 50 locations throughout King County that we will be manning, and we are still short by about 20 locations for volunteers. So, if anyone is willing to step up, I hope you have your pins and papers out. You can reach us at area code 206-329-0300, and you can speak to my operations manager, Belinda Dunbar, to get coordinated if you are, if you're willing to come out and help us on that day. It's a great day. We always have a wonderful time, and we collect a lot of food for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. So, in a few weeks, 500 pairs of kids' sneakers will walk home with, on a Friday afternoon, with a backpack full of food to get them through the weekend. Not 52,000 pounds, but a couple pounds of food in backpacks, and hopefully they'll come, those backpacks will come empty with the food gobbled up over the weekend from those kids so they can get back to school and get a good start. So, we do it in great amounts. We also do it in small amounts, and every amount in between. I think the collaborations in this community are phenomenal, and with my wife and I being here a total of 48 days, we're ready to take some of that energy and momentum and make this a great year. And this incredible proclamation and the attention that we're able to give and the favor of the city, come alongside nonprofits who care about one thing, the same thing you care about, the citizens of Renton, and we just are really blessed and honored to be allowed to be a part of this. So, thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you, Major Potter. Appreciate you being here. For those that want to volunteer and people that are watching on TV, that telephone number again is 206-329-0300. So, let's make sure we get a lot of volunteers to help out. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is a special presentation from the King Conservation District. We have Deidra Grace, who's here with Melissa Lang.
It's Deidra Grace, G-R-A-C-E, and we are at 1107 Southwest Grady Way, Suite 130, zip code 98057. And thank you, Mayor Law, President Person, and members of the council. Like I said, I am Deidra Grace, and this is my colleague, Melissa Lang, and we are just delighted to be here to update you a little bit on the work that KCD, King Conservation District, has been doing, and to give you a little taste of what we hope is in the future. And I just want to make a quick point that it's a real honor to follow that proclamation, so thank you. So, King Conservation District is one of 45 conservation districts in the state of Washington, and we are actually, this year, celebrating our 65th anniversary. And we work with landowners, cities, and nonprofits to help land managers steward their natural resources in a sustainable, in a sustainable way. So, in 2013, KCD co-convened with King County two complimentary roundtable committees, the Conservation Panel and the Task Force. And the purpose was to look at natural resource needs in the county and then existing programs. The panel and the task force identified nearly 100 needs, and they were able to prioritize the top six that KCD was uniquely and particularly equipped to be able to address. And from this, they tasked the KCD to create a working advisory committee to develop a program of work that would be submitted to the King County Council on August 1st. So, forming a very representative and working advisory committee was one of the top recommendations coming out of the Conservation Panel, which was elected officials, and the Task Force, which was senior staff from various representative bodies, including Sound Cities, rural and urban landowners in the county. They asked us to form a committee that would have representatives from King County, from the city of Seattle, from the city of Bellevue, from Sound Cities Association, rural and urban landowners, as well as representatives from the Equity and Social Justice Movement, to ensure that whatever kind of program we developed around those six areas that you saw was truly representative of the priorities of the region. So, this timeline shows the advisory committee's meetings. It's a bit daunting looking, but we were able to work with an executive committee within that advisory committee, and that was comprised of anyone willing and able to be on that executive committee. So, we moved rather quickly, the red box at the top there is, was our deadline for the submission, and what we will be doing in the fall is working on implementation plans of how we will implement this program of work. We're in the process of developing those implementation plans right now. And of those six program areas that you saw at the beginning, they really sift down to three critical areas that stakeholders around the table really wanted to see King Conservation District focus on. And quite simply, it's building a sustainable, equitable, and resilient food system, as we just heard the need for that, really looking at preserving and expanding our region's rural forests and urban canopies, and ensuring that we have clean water for all of our citizens and for habitat and wildlife. So, looking at three of those, we're going to start with the regional food system. King County farmers produce $600 million worth of raw goods consumed by King County residents. Unfortunately, King County farmers only produce, so, I'm sorry, King County residents consume $600 million worth of raw foods. King County farmers only produce $120 million of that. So, there's a lot of area there for growth. And with our partners, King County, CLTILF, Cascade Harvest Coalition, Pike's Place Market, and the Puget Sound Regional Food Council, we can work to address obstacles that keep local food access, keep, I'm sorry, provide, improving the facilities, storage facilities, production, packing centers, and creating distribution and marketing opportunities. Low-income residents spend about $41 million in assistance dollars on food. And up until recently, very few of our farmers' markets were mechanized to be able to accept those assistance dollars. So, that's something we also want to be working with, so that we can encourage and promote local, healthy food to our citizens. The second priority area was really expanding the programs that address forest health. And that's forest health wherever it is. There's rural forests, and we have over 45,000 acres, and rural forests are actually held in the hands of people who own less than five acres of property. And currently, the county has programs that work with commercial forestry and with large landowners that have forest lands, but they don't have the capacity to help those small property owners, even though combined, those small property owners really do represent a lot of forest. So, our process uncovered a need for that, and that became a priority. But just as important are the urban canopies. There are a lot of communities across King County that either historically just haven't had a lot of tree canopy, or even more alarmingly, are seeing their tree canopy disappearing. And KCD and its advisory committee is proposing to develop a program to work directly with municipalities, whatever their own goals are, to help them develop urban canopy and green infrastructure programs that work for their own communities. And then finally, around clean water. Over two-thirds of King County marine and freshwater shoreline is owned by private landowners. So, through one-on-one technical assistance, train-the-trainer programs, workshops, and classes, we want to address and give those landowners the best possible information about how to be good stewards of that. So, essentially, the advisory committee advised us, recommended that we submit a package to the county for full funding that would address these needs and these programs because the region has huge needs and they're going to get bigger. Money is tight and unreliable. We know that more and more support for these kind of programs is going to have to happen at the local level. And finally, we know that these are the priorities that residents want. They want local healthy food, they want healthy forests, and they want clean water. When we submitted our program of work, we also submitted 61 letters of support from King County rural and urban landowners, from cities, including the Sound Cities Association pick and their board of directors vote, and also from agencies and businesses within the county. You can see just a short truncated list there. We have 69 because the letters continue to come in, so. Before we move to the final slide, what's next? I would like to just point out that historically, conservation districts have worked within rural communities, and they're often still thought of today as sort of agrarian, rural, rurally-focused organizations. But when you look at this list, there's a lot of urban communities, a lot of urban organizations, and we are an urbanized and more urbanizing county, and so the Conservation District is adapting to that and really looking at how can we make, help people steward the land wherever they are, whether it's in the city, in the suburban communities, or out in the rural community. So, finally, what is next? It's a little bit of what we're doing right here. We're just really talking to people, meeting with cities, sometimes senior staff, looking at what is it that you need, and how can we use our programs to leverage other resources outside dollars to bring the kinds of programs that will help your city meet these kind of goals. So, we'd love to entertain some questions.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, I'm curious, Deidra, to know if there's any kind of conversations. I noticed in the food, local food agricultural development piece that one of the reasons that there is, you know, that big gap in terms of the amount of produce that's generated locally versus the 600 million in consumption, that there is not enough buy-in from our hospitals and school districts. What are we doing to address that and to educate them and to help them to understand that there's a shared kind of prosperity? We get healthier kids.
Exactly.
They buy local, you know, they eat those carrots and broccoli.
I'm really glad you asked that question, because one of the things that we're doing currently is, we are sitting on the kitchen cabinet, the King County's kitchen cabinet, which is looking at sort of the whole food system, and really two big goals. The access side of food, why aren't people able to access healthy local food, and the production side of food, and then what are the barriers in between? And institutional buying is absolutely a barrier that is a clear problem, especially hospitals, schools, obviously. I think there's, if any place that's having some progress, it's schools, because there's a sort of a farm-to-school movement that we're able to utilize. But that, the institutional buying piece is being examined. We are hearing from the institutions themselves what some of the barriers are. King Conservation District actually has a grant proposal in right now that we're waiting to hear back from USDA if we got it or not, to look specifically at storage, processing, and distribution barriers, because we know they're there, but we haven't really quantified them. So, that, so yes, we are really diving deep into those questions.
And I recognize enormous, enormous opportunity from the hospital sector, given that, you know, this is a health-initiated, you know, agency, you know, that should be focused on healthy eating, obesity. Of course, they're addressing that in the schools. So, I see great opportunity for shortening that gap if we can get those two to buy in.
A great example of that is right here in Renton. I don't know if you have been over to Providence, their administrative hospital on Lind?
Lind, yep.
Yeah. They have a great cafeteria that is open to the public. They use a lot of local foods, healthy foods. It's incredible what they're doing over there.
Really? That's good to know. Could you repeat that again for the home audience?
Providence on Lind. It's their administrative offices on Lind. And, yeah, they have just an amazing program going on there.
Super. Good to know. Thank you.
We eat there all the time.
Great. Any other questions from council?
Comment, I really appreciate the great work you're doing. It's very exciting.
Yeah, thank you.
I was going to call your attention to the folder that we gave out. So, in the right side, we have fact sheets. So, these are talking about the six areas that we're going to be working in, giving you an idea of what our current programs are, what our proposed programs are, some budgets, staffing. And then on the other side, there is just a one-page sheet that gives you just a quick overview of what we're proposing, and also what we call a funding sheet. So, this shows a partial list.
It's not comprehensive.
It's not comprehensive. It is a partial list of some of the work that we have done within Renton, so.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
We appreciate it. Okay, moving on to administrative report. Mr. Covington?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of items. Speaking of fresh food, there are only two markets left in our 2014 Renton Farmers Market season, so we're encouraging folks to come down tomorrow for our first salmon day. Market is open from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Piazza Park in downtown Renton. They can learn about how the salmon run on the Cedar River, join naturalists for a walk from the market to view salmon, and most importantly, buy the fresh fruit and vegetable that'll be there. People who are interested can visit our website, www.rentonfarmersmarket, all one word, dot com, for more information. And wanted also just to make the public aware that the city of Renton and King County District Fire, District 25, are going to be meeting this week, Thursday, September 25th, at 2:00 p.m., Renton City Hall, to explore the, begin the process of at least exploring whether or not the city and the district should consider the establishment of a regional fire authority. So, that meeting is open to the public. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next item is, pardon me, audience comment, and we have several people who have signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes to address the council. We have a timer with a light on top, so you can kind of keep your eye on that. First is Andy, is Andy Neck? Did I pronounce that correctly? Come on up, Andy.
Good evening. My name is Andy Wannack, 1118 North 38 on Lower Kennedyale. I would like to comment on zoning, how this thing is going to affect me. I immigrated to the United States in '84. After 10 years, I bought my house, the one in Lower Kennedyale. So, when I bought it, I knew I'm buying, you know, I pay extra, you know, a few dollars because the house is sitting on two lots, and until, you know, now, I learned if you guys are going to change the zoning, I won't be able, you know, to develop this. And for those years, I had three kids, so I was investing in those kids. I'm done with them, and when we had extra money, we were paying mortgage. So, my plan was, I don't have any 401K or something, this is pretty much it, and it's going to affect me, and I think a lot of people, you know, like me too. So, I got called. Okay, so this is how it's going to, you know, affect me. Even my neighbor, you know, this older lady, when I told her, said he was going to change the zoning, and she said, no, no, she didn't believe me, like, you know, I'm lying to her or something. So, a lot of people, and we're not rich people, you know, like if you own, you know, lot or two or house sitting on two lots, we're not rich, we're just, you know, hard-working people. That's one issue. Second thing is, construction worker, I got electrical degree, so on daily basis, I work, you know, for developers, for whatever. And I think the problem is not in the size of the lot, the problem is in the size of the houses. Because we're doing, you know, the big houses, like now we're working on some projects, 5,000 square foot lot, and we're building, you know, 4,800 square foot, you know, houses on, you know, three levels. This is where the problem is. We're installing like, you know, two, you know, heat pumps, one in the basement, one in the attic, because, you know, until, you know, that pump is going to kick, it's going to take, you know, a long time. So, you're losing, you know, energy, and another thing, you know, electrical. So, not too many people, you know, lives in those, you know, big houses. So, I think it would be way better to put restrictions, you know, on the size of the house, not, you know, on the lot. This way, you know, you're going to have like harmony, you know, you're going to have like, and everybody can afford it, you know. If you're going to go and shrink, you know, with the, you know, I mean, if you're going to reason, the prices are going to go, you know, up, and people, I mean, it's not going to be, you know, affordable, you know, for everybody, because they're still going to build, you know, huge houses. They're not going to go, you know, they're going to have bigger lot, and still you're going to have, you know, three, I mean, four, 5,000, you know, square foot, you know, house going, you know, on that lot. I think the issue is, you know, you have to work on, you know, setback, and also restrict. This way, the poor guy can buy, you know, the middle-class people and the rich, you know, guy, and you're going to have the harmony. On big lot, you're going to have big house, and smaller, you're going to have smaller, and everybody happy. That's pretty much what I want to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question? Can you tell me how big your total lot is?
Now is 100 front by 108.
Okay, so 10, 10,000.
So, if I will do it today, I'm good, you know, for two lots, and we had options, like, I will sell one, develop, you know, the other one, or I can build, you know. So, basically, I got few options, you know, to deal with it, you know, and like I said, that would be my investment, you know, for life. If you're going to reason, I'm stuck. I cannot do, you know, anything, you know, because, you know, I don't have enough land to, you know, do it, you know, two lots.
Okay.
And it's a lot of people, you know, and on Kennedyale, you know, is, is a lot of those lots, you know, 50 by 100, I think maybe 80 percent of the Kennedyale is, you know, is like this. And another thing, when I bought it, I went to 203, and I asked, okay, is this is two lots? Oh, yes, yes. Okay, fine. And then, when Marlin was doing the road, I said, okay, I don't want to dig out, you know, later. I approached 203, you know, to install the water meter, and so I paid for it, you know, they did. Then I hired, you know, the utility contractor, they put a sewer, you know, for me. So, I got extra driveway. So, if you're going to reason my, you know, my lot, I'm going to end up, you know, on one lot, 100 by 108, with two driveways, two water meters, two sewers, which I paid, you know, along, whatever, if I had money, why I didn't, you will ask, why I didn't do it, you know, before? Because I didn't have money. It's just, you know, to go and subdivide or something, you know, because I had mortgage and tickets.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next is Martha Bloss.
Good evening. Martha Bloss, 3302 Burnett Avenue North, Renton. I also reside in Lower Kennedyale, and amazing enough, I see my neighbor here, and we're in the same kind of a position. I have a corner lot, which is quarter of an acre, and it's two separate lots, and I pay taxes on lot one and lot two. And I was told, I have two buyers at the moment, I cannot sell it, because as of the last city ordinance or code ordinance, I have one lot, because I have a house that's 60 years old, sitting, encroaching on one of the lots. And it's considered one lot now, a quarter of an acre. I don't know what kind of monstrosity I can build there to be able to cover the costs and sell it. It's not going to sell in Lower Kennedyale, in Renton, because it's not there yet, you know, it hasn't developed to that point. And I have two buyers that I could have sold it last year, but I didn't have them, and I have them now, but I cannot sell it. I can short sale, which, when I look back at everything that I've paid into that house, it financially would probably destroy me and kill me, and I've never missed a payment, and I always paid for it, and when I bought it, 14 years ago, I knew that would be my investment, and this is going to be something that I will rely on in the future, and now I just don't feel, pretty much I'm echoing everything that he said. I don't want to take your time to repeat myself over and over again. I do love living in that area, and I don't know, it's just very disappointing. I do love living in that area, and I don't know, it's just very disappointing. But at the same time, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Jay Covington prior to the meeting, and he was kind enough to, or kind, he was kind to tell me that he's going to look into that and see what could be done. But obviously, at this point, I'm stuck with my investment, and I understand every time you invest, it's a gamble, but it's, I went through the economic or economy that went down, and I was able to somehow get through it, and now it's a new challenge. So, please help if you can, or at least listen to our story, because at the same time, when I look at my lot, and there is a house that's on the top of that street, and it's an enormous house that's just being built, with the setbacks that are, I kind of measured, probably not the right ones, and you can measure, there is two feet between, or there are four feet between the brand-new houses being built and older house that's sitting on the next lot, four feet. You can shake hands, and if they can have that, why can I have that? But this is not, of course, the argument, but that's how the whole, my whole thinking started. So, thank you very much for your time. Again, I don't want to take up.
No, we appreciate you coming down. And Chip, I was going to suggest if there are any questions that you feel comfortable answering tonight, that, you know, step forward. If not, we will get back with you with any specifics about your property.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is Adam and Eva Polka.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm resident of City of Renton since 1981, 808 North 38th Street. When we moved here from New York, I asked the previous owners, because we have house sitting on two lots, can, and we have one daughter, can we, in the future, make, since the house is very old, and can we build two houses on it? I went to the City. I had open communication with them, and they told me, "Yes, you can," because it's 50 by 102 requirement, and I was pretty satisfied with this. I have been supporting City of Renton. I love the City. I have been participating in lots of City activities. We have been paying taxes to City of Renton. We're paying utilities to City of Renton, and we will appreciate if any kind of study, I'm not going to repeat myself like previous people said, because that's common sense, but I will appreciate if the study will be done, because nobody notify us about this coming. So, that is like shocking to me, why, since I have been in real estate before, and comment was always 50 by 100, and to keep smaller houses, keep people happy, don't turn, you know, too humongous, different neighborhood where people cannot afford, people like, oh, we are working people, can afford the smaller house and still stay in our community. So, that's basically what I would like to say, and I will appreciate if something will be done. If any variances are requested, we always get the notification. This time, we did not get anything. That was really shocking to me about this proposal. So, please reconsider this, and just see what other people, every other city is building on smaller lots. Let's stick to the same size of the lot, but let, you know, average person be able to afford to stay in their own community, which they work and love and have been supporting for so many years, like other City Council people have been, I'm sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Taylor. Ms. Polka, can I ask, how did you learn about this planning, zoning action that's being discussed?
My neighbor told me. I did not have any clues, and I was shocked, because I'm leaving tomorrow. My brother is very sick, and I have to leave. So, if nothing, I will miss all that stuff, and this is, really means a lot to me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alex Wilford.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Alex Wilford. I'm here as a representative of the nearly 3,000-member companies of the Master Builders Association of King and Stonewall Counties. Thanks for having us this night, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment. City staff has had a proposed R6 development standard drafted since June, and the interim zoning regulation was just recently proposed to the Planning Commission on September 3rd. I am having a hard time understanding exactly what the emergency is that's changed from June to September. Why is the open public comment process of the Growth Management Act that mandates a comprehensive plan update not sufficient here? What necessitates an interim zoning regulation? And how does the proposal and the process support the mandates of the Growth Management Act? The NBA supports the City of Renton in adopting an R6 standard that is consistent with the rest of the region, and a public comment and open process. Here, however, the City Council is being asked to adopt an entirely new zoning standard into existence in essentially 19 days, from September 3rd, when the interim zoning regulation was first proposed, to this evening. The standards it proposes are more restrictive than most anything else in the region. They're above the median average, which you'll see later tonight, I believe, on minimum lot size, side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, rear setbacks, and these standards will significantly reduce vacant land values. And they essentially prohibit six units per acre when you are building on one single acre. If you buy a single acre and you go to put six units on it, it's not, you can't make it happen. I've played around with it in Google SketchUp, even with your staff. I couldn't make it happen. Six units per acre will be the exception of the rule, not the standard, under the proposed regulations. According to the study by the National Association of Home Builders, if, under these proposed regulations, for every home not built, the City of Renton will lose $283,000 in local income, $43,000 in taxes and other revenue, and three jobs. That's just the first year. The annual recurring loss will be $40,000 in local income, $11,000 in taxes and other revenue, and half a job. While the purpose of their interim zoning regulation is to essentially hit pause, development is still going to happen under these regulations. They're just going to happen under a different standard. The City of Renton doesn't really even know at this time whether or not the proposed R6 standards are good for the city. Where's the study showing that these regulations result in a more predictable development pattern and enable a better quality of life for your citizens? Where is the study showing the effect on home buyers, residents, and families? Where is the study showing how these will affect property values? The truth is that very little is known about the proposed regulations, and your city staff reports say just that, that there is one report drafted by Burke and Associates, and that nothing else has really been done. If the City Council deems prudent to adopt these, the interim zoning regulation tonight, the NBA would just simply respectfully request that before any prior action in the comprehensive plan update be taken, that these issues be addressed. We would respectfully, however, request that you do address these questions before taking any action on the interim zoning regulation. Thank you for talking.
Thank you. Chip? Can you, I know the planning and development is, has listened to this and worked with this quite a bit. I don't know if other council members may have some questions. I think a couple of the obvious questions would be, or explanations would be, that this is an interim zoning proposal. So, my suspicion is some of the issues that Mr. Wilford brought up will be investigated and discussed in an open public forum.
Absolutely.
Before that becomes our zoning code.
Absolutely.
Is there anything else that you might?
You know, if I could, just for benefit of the public and some council members who haven't been engaged completely in this, as we have at the Planning and Development Committee, at the Planning Commission, the council referred this to the Planning and Development Committee and the Planning Commission on August 11th of this year. So, we've been discussing this since that initiation for about six weeks now. Typically, the way the process works for interim zoning and moratoria is the issue comes before the council for adoption the very same night it's being proposed. And the reason for that is that we are staying the opportunity for new development to vest to the old rules while new rules are being considered, either through interim zoning or moratoria. We in the administration knew there was a number of projects that were, people had been working on in the R8 zone, and we really wanted to have the benefit of some transparency and public process. So, the Planning Commission held a couple of public meetings where they could engage in the public discourse, understand the proposal that was on the table, and then make a more informed recommendation back to the Planning and Development Committee, which meeting we had today. So, there was an opportunity to provide for some transparency in terms of what was being advanced, to make sure we could, got it as close to being accurate as possible. But at the end of the day, it's exactly what the mayor said. This is interim zoning. We're simply trying to preserve opportunities under our comprehensive plan update. We're in the middle of that comprehensive plan update. By June 30th of this year, we are required by the Growth Management Act to have a new comprehensive plan in place. What we're seeing, based on our analysis, is a lot of developments vesting to R8 standards that are inconsistent with existing development patterns in many neighborhoods and communities. And we're hearing that from the communities as we go through the public outreach process. This is merely an opportunity to preserve options for the City Council and for the citizens, so that they can make informed choices about what the ultimate vision is for the city under the comprehensive plan, without the fear or concern of new projects coming in, investing under regulations that could be inconsistent with that direction by June 30th, 2015.
So, Chip, can you answer some of the concerns by some of the property owners that have small lots, or maybe a couple lots together?
Yeah.
That impact?
Yeah, and as the mayor indicated, I encourage any of those people to come and talk to me. One of the points made by Ms. Blow and Ms. Polka had to do with a regulation that was adopted a little over a year ago by the city, and that was to say if, that you have a home that's built over a property line, and you have two lots, you can't tear down that house and reclaim the two underlying lots unless those lots conform to the existing zoning requirements of the city for the zone that's in place then. The problem was, people had a lot of old lots they'd built over, and they were tearing down the house, and they might have two, three, or four lots, and simply say, "Oh, these lots exist now. I'm going to build on these lots," and they didn't conform to our existing zoning. And at the same time, we weren't getting any frontage improvements for, you know, curbs and landscape strips and sidewalks as well. So, that was the issue that I understood that was with a couple of different projects, but if they can conform to the zoning that exists today, we can take them through the short plating process. But that was one of the issues that was referenced there. I think I have touched on the issue of notice already that was raised, and, yeah, I guess that's the main thing. I would just like to say that this is really about preserving policy choices and opportunities for the council and the public to really create the vision for the city going forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Governor.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So, in your, in your example where you say there's a house maybe that's sitting on two lots, are those, are you actually talking about lots that have already been subdivided as two lots, or is it just enough acreage that it could be two lots?
I was talking about lots that were planted back in the 1930s, 1940s. They're called heritage lots. They don't conform to the subdivision rules today, but they, they were built over as one lot, and the city adopted rules a couple of years ago that says, "If you're going to do that, you need to conform to the existing zoning requirements, both in terms of lot area as well as frontage improvements," because it was, basically, it was a loophole in the code that allowed people to circumvent the current zoning requirements.
So, the interim zoning proposed now has nothing, doesn't impact that any differently than it would have been anyway?
Not from what I understood. They were referring to action taken by the city about a year ago.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Chip, what about some of the other concerns? One in particular about the, have we looked into and the impacts of our property owners that this zoning, this interim zoning is going to have? And then, the other question that I would want an answer to is specifically, what constitute it being an emergency for us to do this now? Why could we not do this, you know, with a little bit more public, you know, comment and involvement, and learning more about some of the impacts that I'm hearing about over the course of another, you know, week or two?
Okay. Well, let me take the emergency question first. You know, emergency is really, under the state law, the City Council is given broad discretionary authority to define what emergency is in terms of public health, safety, and welfare. The fact that we have developments coming in regularly vesting to standards that might be different from what the council would consider in the best interest of the community going forward, that's within the council's discretion and purview to define what an emergency is. And it depends on which side you're looking at the issue from. For a neighbor with a proposed development going in next door that's incompatible with existing development pattern in their community, you know, that's an emergency to them, and that affects the public welfare while preserving choices for you. With respect to, you know, the development potential for those individual property owners, our hope is to come back with a land use element and zoning that provides affordable housing for all economic segments of the population. And we're seeing a lot of development activity in the city right now, and some of it may be inconsistent with that long-term goal for the city. So, it's really not about the R8 or the R6 as much as it is to make sure that we create predictable standards in our zoning, that when the council chooses to apply those land use designations and zones as part of the comprehensive plan, that we provided a full range, a full spectrum of housing opportunities for people regardless of income and lifestyle, that there's choices out there for our broader community.
Okay, and the other thing that was mentioned by Master Builder Association's Representative Alex Wilford was a study done by the National Association of Home Builders that spelled out some economic disadvantage to reducing, you know, the number of homes that can be built. Have we taken a look at that?
Yeah. I haven't specifically looked at that proposal, but as I indicated to the mayor, that's something that we will evaluate as part of the final decision, as part of the comprehensive plan update. I will tell you, there's a lot of different studies out there in terms of what the cost of new housing is in terms of both infrastructure and service delivery, and whether or not new residential development pays for it. And it really depends on whose information you're reading, whether or not it's a net gain or a net reduction that the city coffers.
So, one of the concerns that I have, especially recognizing the struggles that we're having in terms of revenue, you know, we just recently voted to increase our BNO tax, and we're also looking at the, you know, coming meeting with the Fire District 25 to talk about a regional fire authority, is have we taken enough time and consideration and weighing the fiscal impacts that this potentially could have to our city? And is the notion of this emergency such that it outweighs the possibility that there can be some unintended impacts to our residents?
Well, given that this is interim regulations by which you can only have in place for a short period of time, and the fact that we plan on adopting a comprehensive plan to address all those on June 30th, and more fully vet, analyze, and understand it, it seems prudent from, you know, community and economic development's perspective to make a decision to preserve those options and choices. So, you can do that analysis without development patterns getting established, that basically those choices and options are gone once that happens.
So, I guess I would come back to, when I see people sh-. So I guess I would come back to, I see people showing up at this meeting who say that they didn't know about, you know, this, they're learning about this action that we're, you know, looking to take. They learned about it recently, and they've got some major concerns because of their, you know, their potential adverse impacts. I'm concerned that, you know, we may not have, this process might not be the way to go about it. If this is something that we must do, that is, you know, indeed, you know, it trumps, you know, potential adverse outcomes to our property owners, I would like to see more public input, more public involvement in process so that if, at the very least, they're educated and to be on board with it and to support it, not that we just ram it through, you know, in a 19-day window based upon, you know, what I've heard.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President.
Well, very eloquent. In the public process, we do have to have a public process. And if it were just for, just talking for myself up here, I would like to take these lots and find a solution for the people right now this evening. Unfortunately, that's not going to happen. And what we have to be careful of, and I think what I've, I've been around the city since 1966 when we started at 12,000 people. And I've seen different zonings and go in. And what has happened is every time there gets a spike in the economy, all of a sudden lots that we thought would never be built on end up with three or four houses on them. And then the people really get upset because they don't understand, they haven't had a chance because they don't understand what's going to happen. So if we don't do something like this to slow the process down so we can get the input from everybody, not just the people who have these special circumstances, which I think we should take care of. But where there's a bigger landowner and they can shoehorn in houses like you can't believe, and then all of a sudden we have several hundred citizens down here saying, why did you allow this to happen? And as I understand this process, and maybe Chip can speak to this, maybe we can speed this process up, would basically give us a chance to take a look at it and get everybody a chance to talk about it before all of a sudden I get, hurry up and get my plans drawn for my lot, and the people think there's only going to be nice three or four lots out of it, and they can shoehorn six or nine, I guess like an example that Mrs. Palmer can speak to. In Kennydale, they get nine lots. And when the people find that out, they're really going to be upset. So you've got to try and weigh for everybody. And as much as I don't care for moratoriums, this is basically just another verbiage for doing that so that we can figure it out and not get people rushing in with a plan and getting grandfathered in so that as we've had this thoughtful process, that we get, we come up with what's best for everybody in the community. And my question, I guess Chip, is if we were to pass this, is there some way that we could speed the process up?
We have, we will work as hard as we can to get this process going through in a timely manner. The good news is we started this process about a year and a half ago, updating the comprehensive plan. We will get it through as timely as possible. We plan on having a public open house in November for the comprehensive plan and then coming back to the council right after the first year with the status of exactly where we are. So we'll be asking, bringing forward everything that we've heard from the public. We will have draft elements of all the comprehensive plan right after January. And we'll have a chance to sit down with the council to say, okay, for the plan moving forward, what does the calendar look like? So there is that opportunity that'll be done in consultation with the council after the first year. We're just looking at June 30th as that's our deadline, and we wanted to give some time in the process for good discussion engagement. You know, that's why we started a year and a half ago on this. And I will say, Councilmember Taylor, for those people who've testified, you know, what I'm going to do is make sure that we have their names, that they're part of our interested parties list so that they're engaged and involved in what the final decisions are made here before the Planning Commission and the city council.
Okay, thank you, Chip. Next on the list is Adam Cushman.
Yes, thank you. Adam Cushman, C-U-S-H-M-A-N. On behalf of the Master Builders Association, I'm also a new resident of Renton. As I said, I just moved here to Renton, and my wife and I are actually expecting our first child here in the next couple of months. So as I look to the future and the possibility of homeownership in the community, I've kind of compiled a list here tonight of important factors that I think should guide land use decisions. First and foremost for me is affordability. Being able to purchase my first home is huge. As well as economic and cultural opportunity, sustainability, access to essential services such as schools, parks, public transportation, and also diversity. Diversity in not only the culture, but also the architecture. Some of the stuff that you guys are talking about in terms of setback and lot square footage. And the truth is that the voters of Washington have essentially the exact same principles in mind when they developed the Growth Management Act. And I noticed that those principles also align pretty well with what you guys have up on the wall over there. Now, the Growth Management Act outlines some policy guidelines that you guys are supposed to look at. And I have these in front of me. The first one is encourage the development of, or encourage development in urban areas, which obviously the city of Renton is a developing urban area. And going along with this is the reduction of urban sprawl. You're supposed to reduce the inappropriate conversion of underdeveloped land into sprawling, low-density development. If you take a look at what's on the table tonight, you're doing the exact opposite of what this goal is asking you to do. You're taking underdeveloped land, and instead of looking at the reasons why you haven't achieved this density, you're saying, we're going to back off, and we're going to underdevelop this, and we're going to lower the density, and we're going to turn this into kind of sprawling urban development. This urban sprawl is counter to everything that the growth management policies of the state of Washington are trying to achieve. When we look at transportation, when we look at public transportation, walkability, bikeability, the goal is to achieve density so that these are possible, so that people have access to these types of services. The next thing is encouraging availability of affordable land. As you decrease density, you decrease housing stock. And this results, of course, supply and demand with increased housing costs. Also, economic development's been touched on. With every home that isn't built, you're losing a taxpayer, you're losing a potential business owner, you're losing customers to your local businesses. You're forcing these people out into the outlined communities, and they're going to be buzzing right past your Renton City businesses as they commute to work every day. As opposed to someone like me who's moved into a more dense area of the city. I'm walking to the landing every day. I'm going to the local pizza shop. I'm buying items in Target every day. You guys are getting my tax dollars. If I was forced out into a more suburban region, I'd be blown right by you guys. So that's an important consideration. And these go to fund the parks and the public transportation and the firefighters and everything that the people have spoken to tonight that are important to the community. So in looking at the proposal tonight and kind of the goal, with those goals and objectives in mind, this new interim zoning does very little to achieve the objectives of the state of Washington. It will not serve as a good trial. Developers aren't going to wait nine months and sit around and for you guys to decide what you're going to do. For the people in here tonight, you say this is just interim zoning. No land developer is going to look at this and say, well, this looks like a great experiment I'd love to be a part of. You know, hopefully it works out for everyone involved. No, they're going to go to a community, they're going to go to vacant, buildable land in areas of the state where they can achieve this kind of density. So that's not good for any of the vacant, it drives down the value of vacant land while at the same time increasing housing prices. And you want to talk about maintaining the character of these communities? These will be generic cookie cutter homes due to the setback in the percentage of footage, footprints that are designed into these zoning permits. They're going to set it up so that it's 25 feet back, it's the exact same distance between every single house, it's the exact same setback, every house is going to be identical. Is that really the character of the communities that Renton wants to develop? Is that the diversity you're looking for? Houses that only a certain group of people can afford, that look exactly the same, that have the exact same income levels living there? I would put it to you that that's not what we're looking for in our communities. So thank you very much. And I would also like to mention that there's a constituent here who missed the sign-up sheet, so just FYI. Thank you.
Next is Matt Berntson.
Have I given this to somebody? Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Matt Berntson, B-E-R-N-T-S-O-N. I live at 12040 Southeast 188th Street. That's out in the, out on the frontier with Kent in South Renton. I was a member of the Neighborhood Committee who investigated coming into Renton. And I'd like to report that we're pretty well satisfied having come into Renton. We like having our streets swept and seeing police officers when we don't entirely need them. That sort of thing. Let me mention that I am also a precinct committee officer, happen to be a Democrat, in Renton 11-0456 precinct. Now, I mention that as a coincidence because I bring you a complaint that you can't officially address, but I hope that you as leaders in the community with your status and influence can give this some thought. It has to do with how we become informed about community activities in our neighborhood. In what happens to be my precinct, we don't get the so-called community newspaper. They will not bring it to us. I do not know why. I have talked to them for three years, and they, as it turns out, refuse to deliver there. I drive to coffee in the morning, I cross 116th, and I see in every driveway on Friday a newspaper lying there. That rankles me quite a bit. Because of their unwillingness to bring the newspaper, we don't get any election information. We don't get any city government or notices or news. We don't get any school news. And we don't get any ads from probably interested Renton businesses. And I wonder if the Chamber of Commerce knows this is going on as well. Certainly, the individual businesses, I think, would be interested in knowing that we're not getting their, we're not getting their ads, and we, that's where we shop. So I understand the newspaper has the right as a private business to ignore us. But I think they also have a responsibility as the so-called newspaper in the community. After all, they are protected by the First Amendment. I think they also have a responsibility to act like a community newspaper and deliver us the paper. So my request of you as people in your situation is if the newspaper ever suggests to you that they're serving the community well, ask them why they have left us in this black hole and what they're doing about it. Another thing that occurs to me is other, other places where they refuse to deliver the newspaper. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Greg Sweet.
So I'm a little surprised, but my name is Greg Sweet. I live at 622 Morris Avenue South in South Renton Community Area. And I'd like to talk a little bit about the zoning. So our neighborhood is in the old Renton area. And we're currently, our property is on the tenth of an acre spot. And some things that we've been exposed to in past times are like the Liberty Square project, which was, turned out to be a six-story building that kind of eclipsed everything around it. And so we just want to make sure that we've heard of other people's wants and desires to actually develop their properties and how they feel about not being able to do that. And we appreciate everybody has their own, their own take on it and their own goals and objectives. But we want to make sure that we don't end up with a project like Liberty Square in our backyard because it encroaches on, excuse me, on our privacy and encroaches on our ability to develop our property the way we want to. We like to grow a lot of things in our yard, and you put a six-story property up there behind your house, you're not going to get much sunshine in there. So that's pretty much everything I would like to share.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And Howard McComber.
First, I want to weigh in on the zoning thing. Right off the bat, I think it's very important that we have, whenever we come up with this thing, we have a lot of input from all the people involved, so we get a lot of stuff. And I think Brian is missing, so he didn't get to hear the newspaper thing. I looked her out.
Yeah.
So we will see what happens there. But I think, I think it's so important to have as much input from the people as possible on every activity. Talk to you about activities. Twice? You got it, hey?
Good job.
Howard, we're going to hire you to run that for us.
I think he's been training.
Okay, we've had some wonderful things here. The first thing off the bat was the mayor's thing on gathering up food for the hungry, which is fantastic. This particular group does a lot of that. We appreciate that. We have, in every city, we have hungry people. What's important is that in Renton, we want to make sure they're fed. That's all. And this organization that I'm pushing right now, we're going to have a special charity auction on the 2nd of October in the pavilion. It's going to be really wonderful. And anybody who'd like to contribute something to be auctioned could see me at any point. Anybody who'd like to come, if you just type in on Google, Renton Ecumenical, before it gets any further than that, things will come up, and you can, you can come and join us in it. I think it's very important that we all work together and that we help each other and that we consider in everything we do the people who are disadvantaged. Their voice is less than anybody else's voice. We have some things that are wonderful in this town. Number one, we do have the diversity. I live in the most diverse area in Renton. I think that that's so precious. The important thing also is that we have variety, all kinds of variety. I think, in my own opinion, it'd be nice if we didn't have, if we had more forms of architecture that are, that are built. We have, you know, we have to be considerate of our neighbors. That's true. I agree, we shouldn't be building something that's going to take sunshine away from someone else. But if you like maybe a Victorian style in the Renton Highlands, that's a great idea because we have every kind of style there. Our style is whatever. And just have it and be expressive of your own thoughts, and you can paint it the way you'd like to, sort of like freedom of expression. I think those things are very important. And I think that the important thing, just like we're able to come here and speak for five minutes, both at the beginning and at the end of the meeting, that's fabulous. Not every town gets to do that. I've checked her out. We're pretty unique. I love that. We have a chance to express ourselves. I think this needs to be expressed more. I think they have to have more input all the time. And I think the more, the better. And I think that we all need to help each other. And I think that we all need to help each other and make it happen. Thank you very, oh, by the way, again, October the 2nd, we're gonna have a charity auction, and it's all to feed the hungry and to take care of the people who are most in need of it. This city has been fabulous. By the way, if you just want to know, there's gonna be some art treasures up for auction. I did not know we had such a photographer in our midst, but we've got, and I don't know how you did that, he's got a bald eagle. These are all shot in Renton. A bald eagle coming into a tree. You must have had a telephonic lens about that law.
(inaudible).
And then we have a coffee table book, which some of you have seen, that is, I think he must have spent, I don't know where he gets the time for this, because I don't, but there he has otters with a half a fish, you know that one? Just fabulous. It is a fabulous book, and it's gonna be auctioned on October the 2nd. And there'll be other treasures, and some of our local business people have given us wonderful things to auction off, and so you can come and have a wonderful time and enjoy it. I appreciate personally the great help that you give us in feeding the hungry. Thank you.
Howard?
Yes.
Vicky and I'll donate a wine basket up from our wine cellar.
About all the other things, we appreciate that. Yes.
Okay, Jason, did you get somebody who had come in late?
He did not submit his sheet.
Was there somebody that wanted to testify? Come on forward and give your name for the record.
Hi, good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the privilege to be able to speak. I guess I want to echo the comment I just heard made, that it is a privilege to be able to get up and share our thoughts, our concerns, and what we think, and so thank you for that. So, to me, this process...
Excuse me?
No, I'm sorry. Charles Scher is my name, thank you very much. I live at 903 North 36th Street in Renton, that's Lower Kennydale. I've lived in the Lower Kennydale since, since, I need that, he's got my sheet already. Yeah. I've lived in Lower Kennydale since 1990, so I've been there for a while. I am very interested in the well-being of Kennydale, obviously, I live there, but also the city of Renton. I mean, I care about Renton, I care about it for myself, for my kids, but I care about it for the other people, my neighbors and the other people that live here. The idea of going from R8, from R8 to R6, to me, this seems like a very rushed process. I just learned about it yesterday, and I don't know how, you know, I mean, I read, I don't know how I missed it, and I've heard a lot of people echo that. So, to me, it seems like this has kind of been, I feel as though it's been pushed or ram-rodded through. I heard some phrases here just a little bit ago about interim zoning, choices, affordable housing, and I'm not sure how requiring a larger piece of land for a house is gonna make the house more affordable for somebody, because that land costs somebody something. If we're really advocating choices, maybe we should let the landowner decide if they want to go R8 or R6 when they're developing that. But to my way of thinking, interim zoning is kind of a, I feel as though it's a bit of a disingenuous concept, because, you know, for people that are losing their investments, I guess I would call it an interim death sentence. And yeah, maybe it could be reversed, but we're already halfway toward it happening, and I don't think it's a good idea. A lot of people bought land, we heard from one of the earlier commenters, that they bought land here and were planning to develop it, and now if this goes into effect, they'll lose that investment. So, they maybe weren't able to afford to develop their property right away, but if they wanted to do so afterwards, if this were to pass, they would not have that opportunity to do that. So, and I feel like the city of Renton would lose money with this proposal. I mean, there would be fewer landowners. I mean, again, if we're gonna talk about affordable housing, if you needed to restrict something, restrict the housing size or something, then more people can afford it. But if you take somebody's land away from them and, you know, can only put one house here instead of two, something's gotta give somewhere, and I don't think it's gonna be in favor of the person wanting to buy the house, and I don't think it will be in favor of the city of Renton in terms of the revenue that we could bring in. So, I guess I'll just conclude by saying that, you know, this thing needs to be vetted a lot better than it has been, and it needs to be out clearly for other people to understand it and to have a chance to comment in terms of how it would affect them. My feeling is, I would simply, I'll close with this, I would request that the R6 proposal be rejected, flat out. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming forward. And Chip, do you have his address so you can keep him in the loop?
Apparently, somebody submitted his form for him.
Oh, okay, great.
I do have it.
Mayor and Councilmembers, Chip Vincent again. If I could just, for a moment, really quickly, a statement was made concerning our tenants in terms of meeting our obligations and requirements under the Growth Management Act, and I just wanted to make sure the council and the public understood that of the 39 cities in King County, the city of Renton is number three in assuming the greatest challenges with respect to growth under our comprehensive plan. Only the city of Seattle and the city of Bellevue have adopted growth targets for residential development greater than the city of Renton. So, we're not only embracing the tenants of the Growth Management Act, we're taking them head-on as a leader in terms of taking on and accepting the challenge of the Growth Management Act. The second thing I would like to say is that Mr. Scher talked about the vetting. That is the process that we're hopeful that's going to happen during the time the council, if they choose to act on this, and the adoption of the comprehensive plan. The challenge for us, what we're having this public discussion, is the fact that if people don't like the way that discussion's going, they can go vest development applications to the standards that exist today, and basically get their way. And what we're trying to do, as I said earlier, is preserve options and choices for the council and to have a fully-vetted, fully-public dialogue and discussion, so the council feels confident and comfortable when they're ready to make a final decision and not have that decision made for them, simply because we've had an eight-month period of time within which a lot of projects vested to standards they wouldn't have adopted otherwise.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have six items for council consideration. Are there any items that councilmember would like pulled for discussion?
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I'd like item D pulled from the consent agenda.
It says item B?
D is in David.
Oh, D, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the consent agenda to be adopted as presented minus item D.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council approved the consent agenda minus item D. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item D is a Community Services Department recommendation to approve a lease reduction to one of the groups that was mentioned in our Human Services presentation earlier, from $600 to $400 based on smaller-than-anticipated utility charges. And rather than refer that to Community Services Committee, I would like to move that we adopt that tonight.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Person, that we adopt item D, which will reduce the rent for the Renton Youth Advocacy Center from $600 to $400. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Person.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Planning Development Committee has one committee report. Planning Development Committee committee report, interim zoning. Now, planning and development committee concurs with the planning commission and staff recommendation regarding interim zoning with one amendment. The committee amends the development standard for sideyard setbacks along a street to 17 and 1/2 feet for primary and attached accessory structures for all properties zoned residential eight-dwelling units per acre, R8, and development, the residential four-dwelling units per acre, R4 zone, that uses small lot cluster provisions. The committee also recommends that the council suspend its rules and advance the ordinance to second and final reading immediately after first reading and declare an emergency in order to have the provisions of this ordinance become effective upon passage. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Move that we accept the recommendation of Planning Development Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council approved the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, I have reservations about the adoption of this, and they come on the, me being informed from community members and others that we may be moving a little bit too hasty on this. So, I would encourage my colleagues to consider that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
Yeah, I find this very interesting, and I want to say, actually, I applaud the idea of doing a review of the ordinances. I know that I too have spoken to many residents that wonder how the houses are getting bigger and bigger and bigger and taller and taller and taller, and, you know, for everybody that makes a little bit more money with their investment property, there's three homeowners around it that are convinced they just lost $100,000 on their home because of the fact that they're now in shadow. And so, I think ultimately, when the master builders come to us with data, I challenge them to take that into account, to, don't just say, "Look, this property, you can fit this many big houses, and this is the total assessed valuation now." You need to take into account who lost, you know, the people that have owned their home for 35 years that always had a nice little bungalow that got sunshine, and they've just lost that sunshine. It's gonna be assessed for less as a result. And so, all that has to be figured in. Now, I want to also say that I'm not necessarily convinced that the lots have to be larger. I do believe, I accept the notion that maybe the solution here is, you know, to require greater setbacks, and I kind of like, somebody spoke about, you know, if you have a smaller lot, you put a smaller home on it. I have every confidence that home will still sell for $500,000, you know, even if it's a little smaller. They don't all have to be $800,000 homes. And in fact, I think that notion might be just what we want for affordable housing. And by affordable, I mean, you know, the middle class and upper-middle class might be able to purchase it. That's still not gonna hit the, many of the people in our community, but I think we should have this dialogue, and I'm going to welcome it, I'm gonna find it interesting. I will try and look for a way that people that have purchased a home that was on a double lot, that there might be a mechanism where they could still, you know, realize the value, particularly if it's been two lots and the King County assessor has recognized it as two lots, I think we really owe it to them to be able to do that. But it might be that it's, that they're not gonna be homes that go to within five feet of both property lines and 20 feet of the back property line and stand three stories tall. It may be that the answer's something less. I do want to say, though, with regard to the timing, I didn't know about this either, but that doesn't surprise me. It's intended to be, to have the effect of, sort of like a moratorium, but it's more lenient. If somebody wants to come in and develop, they still can, they just can't, they can't develop to the R8 standard the way it stands now. And the problem with allowing, say, two more weeks, is that anybody that's in our community that has maybe a half-million dollars sitting around, who's got architects and attorneys on retainer, will be able to come in during that two weeks with plans that show the off-site improvements and the stormwater retention and make the R8 proposal. But the person who's a working person, who has the double lot, unless they've got architects ready to go tomorrow morning, they're gonna not be able to hit that deadline. And so, what we're gonna see is a disparity in the community, is more, is Chip ends up awash in 50 proposals by very wealthy people to subdivide their lots while all the other people will not get, you know, will suddenly be left out in the cold. So, basically, we have to move quickly to implement it, and then quickly to come up with the answer that satisfies everybody in the community. And that's sort of the nature of moratorium. So, I didn't know in advance, and that's, frankly, that's appropriate. It was a minority of the city council, three person, people that were in the Planning and Development Committee, but, I mean, it's gonna be an interesting dialogue. I'll want to see lots of good data. I mean, and it's gonna be up to the community to bring meaningful data. I'll just take a couple more minutes to just frame what I would look for. I just, I know that we've had a lot of tension between the R8 zone, the larger and larger homes, our tree-retention ordinance, which seems to always be ignored. You know, I watched R8 get developed next to my house, and there's frankly no room for the trees that the ordinance requires. So, we've got, we've got an ordinance that requires trees and builders that never leave those trees, and so we find ourselves trying to figure out what part of the ordinance to enforce. We're gonna have to come to some sort of meaningful understanding, you know, if we want, and frankly, I want to see trees. I want to see trees left, I want to see trees planted. But we can't just continue on with five-foot-wide lots and say, "Now, plant a cedar tree here and let it get to be 100 years old." You know, we're gonna have to address that. So, lots of work to do. We'll have to just move quickly, to be fair to people that are anxious to jump on this cycle of building. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Any further discussion on the motion? I do say that I'm gonna be interested in seeing master builder's opinion on restrictions on the size of houses.
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. The ayes have it. Okay, was that it, Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbin?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Palmer?
Yes, on behalf of Ms. Brier, I have three finance committee reports.
Finance Committee committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The finance committee approves for payment on September 22nd, 2014, claims vouchers 332465 through 332796, two wire transfers and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $5,680,872.08, and payroll vouchers including 795 direct deposits and 84 payroll checks totaling $1,673,925.89. This is signed by the committee vice chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Next is a finance committee committee report, contract agreement with Seattle Tree Preservation Incorporated. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the agreement with Seattle Tree Preservation Incorporated in the amount of $182,682 to provide tree-maintenance services and approve the budget adjustment of $20,014 from the Urban Forestry Program Capital Investment Program Fund to the Tree Maintenance Fund. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement. This is signed by the committee vice chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Before you vote, I would just like...
Okay, let me get the motion on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur, excuse me, approve the finance committee report. Mr. Person?
You move fast on us sometimes. I'm not ready.
Yeah, I do.
This, I know it sounds like a lot of money involved in this, and I happened to sit in on this committee, and I've also looked at some of these trees, and if you look at the state that just paid out $10 million for not taking care of some dangerous trees, and this is what we're talking about taking care of, you know, everybody loves beavers until it's their tree that they're gnawing on and causing it to get ready to fall over. And some of these are gonna be old cottonwoods that are just ready to go, and the cost is expensive because you gotta bring in a crane, you just can't, like, Mr. Covington and I, when we were in our younger days, we just got a chainsaw out and not worry about where it fell. But we gotta be real careful. So, this is really, really important, and it's kind of like getting rid of some of the trees that we already have along the Maple Valley Highway that were danger to the road. So, this is very, very important, and I just want to let the public to know.
Yeah, and that's our intention on October 6th, to have Terry Flaherty present to full council with what we're doing with that tree removal.
Good.
Okay, any other discussion?
Good, you're fine.
I don't want to be too quick here.
All ready, go ahead.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
One more.
Okay, the final Finance Committee committee report, Renton Senior Activity Center Parking Lot Lighting Project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to award the construction contract for the Renton Senior Activity Center Parking Lot Lighting Project as solicited through the Small Public Works Roster Process to Transportation Systems Incorporated in the amount of $134,559.83. The committee also recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation for a budget adjustment and use of $20,000 from the major maintenance boundary topographic and site survey account, as all projects are completed for 2014, which leaves a balance of $12,789 in that account. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the contract. This is signed by the committee vice chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
This is, this is very much needed at the senior center. It's dark. The, when was that built? In the 70s? And it's the original lighting. The trees have grown around the lighting, and our staff has done everything they can to keep the light going, but it's also the type of lights that we currently have. So, along with putting in new lights, and there'll be the LED, which are the wider, there'll be increased lighting, and we're also adding conduit so that we'll have cameras, which are very much needed there. And I just think of the people that use the senior center, they need the safety. And I know, going there myself, on a dark rainy night, it's dark. So, and if you're unsteady on your feet or unfamiliar with it, it could be dangerous. So, with that, I recommend that I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I'm all done.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, looks like we have just one, is that right?
So, we have an ordinance for first reading and advancement for second and final reading. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting interim zoning regulations for R4 residential four dwelling units per acre and R8 residential eight dwelling units per acre zones, changing height limits for an identified area, and changing certain areas zoned as R10 residential 10 dwelling units per acre to R4 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move the ordinance to be advanced to second and final reading this evening.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be advanced to second and final reading. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it.
Okay, second and final reading?
Stay on the mic.
An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting interim zoning regulations for R4 residential four dwelling units per acre and R8 residential eight dwelling units per acre zones, changing height limits for an identified area, and changing certain areas zoned as R10 residential 10 dwelling units per acre to R4 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution. Or, the ordinance is read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that we adopt a resolution.
Ordinance is read.
Councilman Corbin says it requires a roll call.
Mr. Person? Aye. Mr. Prince? Aye. Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
No.
Mr. Corbin? Aye. Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. Five ayes, one no.
The ayes have it, thank you. Moving on to new business, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple things. There'll be no council next Monday, September 29th, that's the fifth Monday of the month, so we don't have council meetings. And on October 6th, at 5:00 p.m., the committee as a whole will meet in the council chambers, and we will have two items, a budget message from the mayor, and start our budget over review at that time. And then, from that on, for the rest of the committee, the halls in October, will be going at least three hours, so we're sure we get through the budget. And then, I'd just like to report, on Saturday, I had the opportunity to have the assistance of a, that show Auburn City Councilman how to barbecue at the Coulon Park. The CAFRA Kids Organization put on a wounded warrior fishing trip for about 100 wounded warriors and their families. And it was just awesome, you know, and they're coming up and saying thank you to me, and I'm the one that should be saying thank you to them for their service. It was well organized and well attended, and I thought it was a great event showing off our facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Person. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Development Committee scheduled for this Thursday, September 25th, has been canceled.
Okay.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Utility Committee will be meeting on October 6th at 3:30, and there'll be two items on the agenda. The first one is Airport Lift Station Replacement Project Budget, and the second one is 2015 and 2016 Utility Revenue Requirements, VIP and Fees.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Committee did have the, on the agenda, the Renton Youth Advocacy Lease Addendum scheduled, but since we took care of that business tonight, the Community Services Committee will be canceled, and that is all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corbin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would just announce that the October 6th Public Safety Committee meeting has been canceled.
Okay, and Ms. Palmer?
Yes, seeing that Community Services Committee was canceled and utility starts at 3:30, I'm wondering if Armando wants to move it an hour.
Yes.
Or however you want to do it, you're going to have a-
Oh, yeah.
-big dead space in there.
How do I do that?
Do you want to move to 4:30?
Yeah, I can move it to 4:30 would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, your utilities is at 4:30 on October 6th.
Thank you.
You're very good.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Been there, done that. Okay, and then my own, the Transportation Committee, which would normally meet this Thursday, September 25th, is canceled.